...regular business meeting of the Foxfire Village Council. Let the record show that Councilman Morgan is absent from the meeting. All other council members are present, as well as members of the audience. I'd like to have an opening prayer.
Father, thank you tonight, like we do every time we meet, for the privilege of meeting in public and discussing the things that affect us as residents in our village. I ask you tonight that you give the council wisdom to work through what we have to work through. Ask that she would give our residents in this village wisdom to listen, to ask their questions. And I ask you to bless and prosper this village mightily in 2025. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can I have a motion for approval of the agenda? Make changes to the agenda? I have no... Oh, no. Okay, no changes to the agenda. Man, a motion to approve the agenda? Make a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make them have a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the public comment period. Now, this comment period is for items that are not listed on the agenda. So any questions or concerns of anyone in the audience? None being, we will move on to the zoning administrators' report.
This zoning report covers activity from December 11th through today, January 14th. Currently, there are 22 homes under construction or in the beginning stages. There are three single-family resident applications brought in during this time period. There are four homes on Foxfire Boulevard, they would be unit one, two, and three. Right as you come in across from the maintenance facility, there'll be three homes. Five certificate of zoning compliance were issued for homes on Grand Pines Court West, Birdie Court, Cortland, Grand Pines Vista, and Windswept. One department for offense was issued, another were issued, and then created a... Your end totals were 2024. I know that the mayor's going to probably report on that at the POA. But that information is there, and I'll have that on the website as well. That's it. It was kind of quiet in March.
Yeah, great. Yeah? Okay, now on to department reports. We have Finance Councilman Gilroy.
Yep, 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 yep. You all have budget versus act pulled from 12/31/2024. You can look through those. I'm gonna have more to say about that at the work session.
Okay.
Okay, I don't want to spend a lot of time there. And then cash balances as of November 30th. Jody Singh, our CPA, was in India for three weeks, and then she got sick. And so she was pushing to get this number to us by 4:30 today. I said, you know, if you send it at 4:15, I'm not messing with it. So she'll send it to us by the end of the day. But as of November, if you look at the general fund in First Bank, it's a million, nineteen thousand and change. North Carolina Capital Management Trust balance on hand, they're 3.522 mil. If you look at the water fund, they're 392,181 in First Bank. And then their reserves plus balance in the North Carolina Capital Trust is 1,263,172. I'm gonna meet with John Frye from Capital Trust toward the end of the month, and he's gonna lay out what he thinks 2025 is the good rate. So if we need to make adjustments in interest, we can do that.
Are we moving money?
I'm gonna ask, yeah, we are gonna move some.
Okay.
Yep.
And the current interest rate, do you know what that is?
No, I looked on their website, and I couldn't find it. So, I mean, they would've adjusted within 30 days after the Fed lowered the rate. So I'm thinking it's probably sitting about four.
Sounds probably... I would hope it's more like four and a half, but it could be four.
Yeah, it's somewhere in there, and that's one of the things I'm gonna ask them about. The other thing I wanted to let you know is we did get an update. We get an update every month from the county in our property tax collection. And we have collected $830,894, which leaves us a little bit left to collect.
You know how much?
No?
That's okay. We were nine something.
We said our property tax was...
Nine thirty-nine.
Thirty-two, I think, is what it was, so you're sitting on about a hundred thousand.
Ooh, that's a lot.
Yeah.
For this time?
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, too. And I can get with Tammy and kind of ask her if she's seeing that across the other municipalities. And that's it. Do we send out notices or anything when people are...
The county...
The county does that. Yeah, the county does that. That's why they're collecting for us.
Okay, we will... Anyone who was delinquent prior to this year is on our collection. We collect. Okay, I send out, we send out notices. Do we have many of those?
Um, fair amount.
About $5,000 worth. It's not a lot.
That's fair amount of people, fair amount of letters that come out.
Okay. Okay, I'm just surprised there's still a hundred thousand dollars out there.
Okay. Any other questions for Finance? Moving on, we have streets and park, Councilman Norman.
Thank you. Shamrock striping. So, finally got done. I think we all remember last year, we talked about getting the striping done on North and South Shamrock. And in case everybody forgot, we actually had stripes on those streets before they were repaved.
We did?
Yes.
Wow.
And now, I didn't do South Shamrock. That was done in 2019. I did do North Shamrock two years ago. And at that time, they wanted $5,000, just put the line down to the portion that they have paved. And we didn't have the money in the budget. So I was like, yeah, hold off on that. And then this last year, and I'm talking, I can't remember when we did pine tree terrace, August, September, somewhere around there. The folks that would have done the striping were out in the western part of North Carolina, helping out after the hurricane. And I had talked to Turner and asked him, while you're here, can you do the striping on North and South and get it back on? Because remember, we did have residents asking for it to be put back. And again, the discussion also came up that at night, when it's raining and it's dark out, you can't see the road. And on both North and South, as you're going down North Shamrock, there's a big curve and the lake or the pond on the right. And as you're going down South Shamrock, we have the bridge with the other pond right to the left of it. So instead of the $5,000 for one road, I... They charged us three to do both sides.
That's the end of the world.
Yeah, great, yeah. So that did get done, and there was a little glitch, I understand. And I'm gonna ask them to see if they can fix it.
Little glitch.
Yeah, yeah, little glitch. It's not the end of the world, but I'll see if they can fix it. And, but that got done. So, any questions about that?
No, thank you for your...
All right, and I just have one other item here, and I wanted to discuss. I think I brought this up, that we needed a budget amended for the septic tanks being...
Okay, so we're adding that to the agenda?
Oh, did I need to do that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it wasn't...
I'm sorry, my bad. Okay. It wasn't typed up. So, we'll just, we could just put it on at a work session?
Yeah.
Never mind, take it off.
Anything else?
No.
Public safety, Councilman Nelson?
Okay, Police Department. Chief, you're on.
All right, everybody doing this afternoon?
Getting well.
All right. I'm assuming all you, you got, everybody got their crayons in their boxes and whatnot. Just a few things we have. Something that we've been kind of sporadically dealing with in the community proper the last three, six months, give or take, is just, you know, sporadic vandalism. Obviously, we've had the issue with people spray painting signs, the street breaking the signs apart, so on and so forth. I want to touch base with all of you as well as anybody in the community, but... Just to reiterate that some of the stuff, I mean, we are obviously looking for these things. If we do encounter it, we will go ahead and charge as necessary. At that point, depending on whatever property it may be, whether it's town property, personal property, wherever it is, they can and will be charged with damage to personal property or real property. I don't know the exact, you know, it obviously all that depends on everybody's records and the damage amount and whatnot. But nonetheless, is like I said, if we do locate that, we will be addressing it as necessary. Next thing is, I spoke with golf course management. Obviously, as we all know, that's changing hands as far as ownership. Whenever I was speaking with them, they actually got, reached out to me and was stating that the parking lot there in front of the golf course, that the residents that are on Foxfire Boulevard, the apartments there, that they don't want any more parking out in front of the golf course or in their parking lot. That is their property, and they can do as such. So they have asked me, hey, can you guys enforce that? And I said, well, we can't necessarily enforce it because it is on their private property. But just to put the message out there, I mean, like I said, myself, Randy, we spoke. And I did advise him and say, hey, look, give them a little bit of time, a little notice to work through their parking situations. I know that obviously, as Lisa has spoken to us a month ago, about three homes going in there at the end. And we've had some discussions about parking and everything there in the median. And so that's something that's on everybody's horizon at this point. So that will be changing some stuff as far as the folks that are parking there, right there at the golf course, they don't want them on their property as of here in the next couple of weeks.
Are they going to post signs as far as...
Whenever I spoke to Randy, he asked about what he needs to do with that. And I said, it's probably a good idea to go ahead and throw some signs out there. That way, it's safe, hey, you know, no overnight parking or whatever it is, however they want to word it. And the vehicle will be towed at the owner's expense.
Can I ask a question? I mean, I'm all good with that, but when that first came up, when that meeting was put in over there, the council, Don, and somebody went to the golf course, because I remember asking the question, hey, there doesn't seem to be a lot of parking for those units. And the answer was, they're all, the golf course doesn't mind if they park on their parking lot. So I don't, maybe, maybe the golf course needs to maybe like write a letter or something, just saying with new ownership that that's gonna change, because they've parked in the golf course lot for years. And to just post a sign, I mean, I know it's a small thing, but it would be wise of the golf course to write those unit owners a letter and say, listen, there's a change coming, and here's what it is, before they just put up a bunch of signs and people get their cars towed.
Whenever me and him spoke, I did kind of say, hey, you might want to give these folks some sort of notice. Because again, I might have two vehicles and, you know, and me and spouse or something might drive one car, hey, or spread it that way, other people are having space to get in their homes. So I said, you know, something to that effect, well, then give them some sort of notice. And again, I don't know if he has already sent something out without it, plans to, or whatever it may be. But that was somewhat addressed.
Well, there is a vacant lot there that is part of that complex. And if they need to create their parking, then they need to create parking for their renters.
Well, and the other concern I have is that if they don't start parking in the pickleball parking lot.
Well, and again, that is town property. That being said, as we all know, with that exact right, as we all know, all of our staff, our facilities are closed at dark. So anything that's kind of seen there at that point, we are allowed to...
And I don't mean to have to get a sign that says, no overnight parking for the...
It wouldn't be a bad idea, but I would hope not to have to cross that bridge. That's currently, that's what we're working with. Like I said, myself, all...
Are you saying in the parking lot or in the park?
In the parking lot.
Okay. I mean, they're not that...
Well, it's already an ordinance that there's no overnight parking, right?
In the park.
Well, that is a...
It, yeah, but we, I think we have specifically said Village Park. And I don't know, I know you guys patrol the pickleball court at night.
Yes, we did.
And I know there's been a couple people that you've asked to leave.
We have.
But I think just to be legal...
Be on the safe side of any witness or hurting thing.
Gives you some standing.
It does, as well as it puts everybody on notice, because like this place, I mean, use a holiday time, for example. You know, somebody delivered a condo right behind the pickleball court, hey, just park over there for the time being. Again, we're not here to jam anybody up for something that's kind of like, hey, I'm here for a couple hours, I'm visiting, you know, family, whatever it may be. But again, if it becomes a all-the-time thing, and that's just my parking lot now, well, no, it's town parking lot. So maybe we will be enforcing that sort of thing. And obviously, that's something that we have all addressed as far as the park and pickleball court pool are kind of the same. But yes, notice had, or it's been discussed that, you know, they give some sort of notice to say, hey, you might want to move your vehicle, so you're not subject to tow. The next thing was kind of, obviously, we've heard several complaints as far as like speeding in the mornings, school buses, not school bus speeding, but people speeding beyond them, especially on Ridge Road. For the last week or so, myself as well as staff has been hitting Ridge Road very, very hard. We've written several tickets. I got one of them that warranted sixty-plus.
Oh, baby!
Right there, right straight away, right by South Shamrock.
Yeah.
Wow, go down South Shamrock.
Yeah, so she was not too happy, but either way, like I said, she was given court date for that. So like I said, we are out and about, we are enforcing all of our speeding and other traffic laws, but that's what we have kind of working there. That brings me to another thing is, obviously, anybody with a golf cart, obviously, we're allowed on town, town, on roads. We ride our golf carts, we're having an ordinance and so on, but we do have to maintain all motor vehicle law. You know, whether, no matter what it be, you know, headlights, taillights, brake lights, using proper signaling, staying in your lane, whatever it may be, we have to still follow the same rules of actual roadways. So again, bring the reminder there.
And they have to be licensed drivers?
Yes, they do. I'm sorry, you're exactly correct. Sixteen years in order, licensed drivers in St. North Carolina. Can't have, you know, five-year-old Tammy riding up and down the road on a golf cart just because of seat board. So the parents can be charged with that.
Grand petition auto drive. I've seen that.
Bringing the next good stuff now. We've had a pretty, pretty good month. We've actually had four drug arrests now. We've had one methamphetamine case, two cocaine cases, and a possession intent to sell and deliver marijuana. Hats off to James, he actually got a good one last night with marijuana. He seized below an ounce of marijuana, six THC vape cartridges, and a Glock 45 pistol out of a car. So again, big, big month for us on that one. We've had one DWI and another additional firearm seized. It was actually somebody that stopped, he got yesterday, was somebody who's been frequenting our park here recently, playing loud music. We've gotten out with him several times now, and he actually got a stop on him last night, or yesterday afternoon, him and Derek did. And ended up getting all that out of it, so that's been going on. He does not live here in town, he hasn't stayed with a friend supposedly. But yes, so that's what we have going on as far as that's. Another day on our charter that's been in the shop, as we all know, James had a deer back in October, November timeframe. We actually get that back this afternoon. I got a call a little while ago, so we're gonna pick it up here shortly. So a big thing, we're getting our vehicles back on the road, which is a good thing. Let's see. Again, my hats off to Derek and Caleb there, now radar certified, St. North Carolina. They went through a weekend and some change in training, been certified. So now they're actually, actually able to go out here in the four-speed in the community, on roadways and whatnot. And next month, Caleb and James are actually signed up to go to more intoxicant training, the SFST, which is, or excuse me, it's intoxicizer, the little breathalyzer machine you get to run at the jail. They're going to get certified on that, so they'll be able to enforce more stuff with that.
Would you need to purchase the breathalyzer equipment?
No, we don't. Pinehurst has one, they allow us to use, and at the jail, there's no one. So depending on the, how quick we have to get it done, we might shoot over to Pinehurst and have it run through their machine, or if they have a few minutes, we'll just take them off to the jail and get everything out of one place and be done.
Would it move us to get one of our own, or...
No, I don't feel like it would be necessary, just because, I mean, again, Pinehurst is what, eight minutes from here? So it's not a huge deal for us in that, and I, that is a big ticket item, I mean.
Oh, yes?
Yes. And like I said, it opens us up into, obviously, recertifications as far as other people and machine. And if we have one, we kind of open our doors to other places coming in to use our machine, which we have the problems with, but at the same time, is when we're a limited officer at times, it is, it puts a big strain on us.
Okay, so...
Yes, I like where your thought is, but...
Just wondering.
Okay, for sure. One of the big things that myself and Derek have going on currently is we're in the process of purging our evidence room. We have cases from 2006 that have never been touched. So it's just a lot of backlog over the years, things kind of falling through the cracks and so on and so forth. So we've been in the process of going through our evidence room, purging, and figure out what can get destroyed now, what we need to write orders for through the court system. And hopefully, here at the next, I would say, four months, we'll have it all kind of situated. Again, we're at the leisure of the court systems, figure out whenever they want to sign them. But nonetheless, is that's what we have going on, that's our kind of our, our big project we're working with currently.
You have a lot of weapons in that store?
We have a lot of weapons in the store, and we have a ton of, obviously, controlled substances, open containers of legal alcohol, just various items, but yes, we do have quite a few weapons. And with those weapons, if we can get them awarded to us, what we can do is actually sell them, if you will, to a gun store in return, it comes back to our budget. And the way it kind of works is, say, for example, we sell them ten guns, we get $4,000 for that. It gives us credit so we can purchase more firearms if we needed it, ammunition, supply, whatever it is that they may offer. So we can, pretty much, it gives us credit with whatever that...
Now, is that because the cases were never prosecuted, or that they never asked for any evidence?
It's, it's several things. A case could be, could be done and taken care of, and, you know, and if the DA, for example, did put evidence to be destroyed on, on, on whenever the case is finalized with the court system, then it just sits there. Okay, and then if they say, hey, this right here can be destroyed, it gets set aside. And then over time, it's like, if we have fifty of them from the year, we can take those fifty items and toss them in. Well, not toss them, they have to be legally destroyed, but from there. So like I said, we do have a lot of that stuff that's already situated, but there's so much stuff that is, like I said, if they don't put to be destroyed on there, it's kind of getting, sitting away, and it collects hot webs. So like I said, we're going through, we have a very small space in there, and it's full in there. So we're gonna go through, we're gonna get all that stuff out, reorganize everything by year, by officer, and try to get all of it, some sort of a controlled chaos.
Now, each item in there that you want to get rid of, you gotta fill out a report and send it to the courts?
Yes, sir.
And then they'll either tell you yes or no?
Yeah, that's exactly right. And if it's something that can be awarded to us, they'll say, hey, if you guys want this, they'll sign it over to Foxfire Police Department, and then we can take it, whatever the item may be, and use as such.
How do you destroy like marijuana and...
We just...
It's gonna be a burn.
Chief, I'll destroy that for you.
Well, let you know where it's gonna be. Everybody gather round.
In this, in this world, let's face it, there's a market for everything. And there are professional businesses out there in the world that actually make a very solid living going through and destroying all this evidence that have a large incinerator, and it's just locked as a bomb.
The neighbors are very happy.
Yes. Like I said, they go through the whole process there. I know in years past, Chief Shu, he has made contacts with some other folks that are relatively local that can actually destroy it as well for us, and they've always done that, loaded in the courts as well. So I'm, I'm going to obviously approach that avenue first, just as a way to possibly save us some money. But at the same time, is, like I said, we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
So the state won't destroy the drugs?
No.
Really?
It falls back to the ATC to take to foot that deal. And like I said, sometimes, like I said, I'll use a large DEA, they may have like a large, like, hey, yeah, if you can get them to Charlotte, we'll take care of it all for you, and, you know, let's take care of whatever it is. Like I said, I'm not saying that's obviously the case, but it might be a few in progress. And last but not least is, like I said, obviously, I gave you guys all the crown from last month. I gotta give a, a big hats off to our staff. Last year, if you'll see, 2024, I had a crown from January 1st to December 31st, 2024. We run 10,966 events. And that was with about half staff, about half the year, give or take, between getting folks hired in the door, trained up and everything where they need to be. And the year prior to that, in 2023, we're in 10,063 events. So we had almost a thousand more events, but close to half the staff for most of the year, or for half the year. So again, hats off to all of our PD staff. Like I said, these guys are not here, day after day, putting in good work, and so I can't give them enough at this point.
They're doing a great job.
For that, I'm good.
I just wanted to say thank you for mentioning the vandalism, because there was, and I don't know, I don't think I told everybody, another sign in the park trails that was literally destroyed. And, yeah. And that, that's gonna be another couple hundred dollars to replace that sign. And, you know, this...
Like I said, we're, we're, we're working, we're taking our measures to go ahead and try to nip all of this stuff right here in the blood as well, because again, obviously, smogging it won't keep it nice. So that's a big thing for us, but yes. I said, I do appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okay, Fire Department. We've had problems with the gate on South Shamrock. The battery that's been in there lasts about two years, and so we gotta replace it. And I talked to Eric about, a week ago, two weeks ago, about putting a lithium battery in instead of the standard acid battery. And it's supposed to hold charge longer. So I went ahead and got online, and I backed him over the information, the size of the battery, et cetera, et cetera. He emails me back and says, it'll fit, it's gonna be, it'll be good. I just got a message that now that the battery will not fit.
From Eric?
It's too big, yeah, from Eric. But he's gonna order a weatherproof tag along case to put in, so he'll get it installed, he'll take care of it. But that battery should last quite a bit longer.
Are they maybe not surprised?
We did.
We did?
We did.
We did.
But I have a question.
Yeah.
Why, and it's not a bad thing, but why are we working through the fire department for the gate instead of the police department? Because that gate really, I mean, it's for fire, but it's used for a lot of other stuff, and it's really almost part of streets and roads, to me. No, I'm just saying, I'm not, no, I'm just saying, I mean, it's not, it's not really a fire department asset, is it? I mean, it's on our roads.
You have to have it, though.
No, I get that.
But who, but does the fire department have the remotes and the keys for that gate?
Yes. Or doesn't, don't...
You got a remote.
No, does, does the police department have the remotes and the keys?
We have the, the, the car remote, yes, we do.
But you don't have, you don't have the keys, like in case the remotes don't work?
We do.
Okay, so who's in charge of the keys? I'm sorry, the fire department has the keys. Well, wouldn't it make sense for them to have keys?
I think the, I mean, it's a little fuzzy to me, I mean...
Well, if it's an emergency gate, yeah, if it's an emergency gate to begin with, then it belong, it both need to have access.
Yeah, I think we, I think the police department needs to have keys.
Well, I'll talk to Eric and see if we can get a key for that police department.
And if the battery doesn't fit, I used to do ship repair and maintenance. If the battery doesn't fit, are you sure we shouldn't send the battery back and get a battery that fits?
No, because they don't last. We tried it, they don't last.
Okay, I thought... No, no, the lithium one she's talking about.
Yeah.
No, but we ordered a lithium battery, and it doesn't fit, it's too big. So is it possible that we should send that back and get one that fits, or is there not a lithium battery that fits?
There isn't one small enough.
Okay.
I got the smallest one that I made, and it was, Eric said it was gonna work, and all of a sudden, it doesn't. So he's gonna pay for putting that in large box there. He's gonna take care of it.
Fire department?
Yeah.
Okay.
He wants us to wire that direct from Duke and go solid wiring into that box.
I was just gonna ask why, and I know it was a very large dollar amount.
Oh, it's tremendous.
Huge.
Tremendous.
It was thousands of dollars to wire that.
Plus, the minimum monthly fee on the meter alone is like thirty-five, forty dollars a month. I can buy two batteries for that, and the battery's gonna last at least two, three years, so...
If it's a hard wire and pay for it, fine, but we're not paying for it.
But, but there again, if the power goes out, you're still, you still need a battery backup on the gate, no matter what. You need a battery backup, so it's, yeah. On the gate, no matter what, you need a battery backup, so it's, yeah.
Well, I'll talk to Eric, get a key for, so we can get, uh, for the police to get in that box.
I think they need more than one.
Start with one, then make more from there.
Okay.
Okay, also, he says that, I just got an email telling me he's not gonna be here. He said they've been extremely busy in two thousand twenty-five, they've had sixty calls already with about twenty-eight, seven in Foxfire. They had a shooting up in, uh, Seven Lakes West, where they, you probably all heard about that?
Yeah.
Where they're both, they were both in the army, one, the husband is a volunteer fireman. He lives in a room, putting his guns away, and his wife was in the other room, gun went off, went through the wall and killed her. Uh, she didn't die right away, but she passed away, so that's not good. And what else I got? I believe that's all I've got right now on the fire department.
Any questions for public safety?
No.
No, can I make excuse for thirty seconds to grab my markup copy of the league stuff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thirty seconds?
Yeah.
Go, count it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, starting my report, um, legislative goals from the league. Now, this is something that, um, the league, as you know, is our lobbying, um, um, for the municipalities in the state, and it's not just our county or our region, it's, it's the whole state. And these legislative goals are recommended by the board of directors. Um, I believe the North Carolina League, uh, at some point solicited ideas for this. Uh, we did not participate in that, only because I think they sent out so much mail that it was probably buried in something and it was missed. Regardless of that, these are the, um, these are the goals that they came up with. And I asked you all to review them. Um, I'm not thrilled with most of them, to tell you the truth. I, I had to, we get to vote for ten goals. And all the communities vote, and then they, that's what they focus their efforts on. So what I'd like to do is probably go item by item and just start with the first one and let's move on, as if you're interested in it or not, or if you think we should support it or not. And the first one is expanding funding opportunity for disaster resilience and recovery efforts. And, and basically, um, they're saying how North Carolina has faced a lot of, um, disasters. And then it says, the very last note is federal assistance and private insurance will not be enough to address these ongoing critical needs or mitigate damage when future disasters hit. So I think what they're saying is that they want to lobby for more funding for, to bail out private property owners.
Sorry.
And, and I guess what I would say is, is this something any of you are in favor of?
No.
No.
No, we all given up to donations and sharing.
Well, that, and it's, you know, if you don't have enough insurance, you should have enough insurance, and, you know, you have to have some kind of, everybody, we can't be expected, in my opinion, to be bailed out.
Every time something happens.
Every time something happens, because you have to have personal responsibility. I could see infrastructure as far as roads, maybe.
Totally different.
And that's different, but person, when it comes to personal property and private insurance, um, I don't think the state needs to be stepping in unless they want to do, unless they want to do loans.
And the state, there's an article, I can't remember where I read it, it's in the last week, where they're gonna regroup in the House and figure out how to better assist western North Carolina, because their first plan for response didn't work. So that's not, I don't think states do a really good job of that.
Right, so I, I wasn't in favor of that one. The, the next one is establish long-term funding streams that adequately address water, sewer, stormwater, transportation, and other infrastructure needs. Um, infrastructure including roads, water, sewer, um, again, many cities in the state are growing, creating a constant need for investment to keep pace with population, and creating long-term and more permanent funding streams for infrastructure will ensure adequate investment so that North Carolina thrives now and into the future. I'm not opposed to this type of thought process.
I'm not opposed, I just see tax increase every, I look at these and I go, well, how, just how much are you gonna raise taxes in order to do this? I'm not opposed to that one, though, infrastructure for us for water can be a good thing.
I mean, and whether it's grants, or whether it's very low interest loans, or even consulting and helping, um.
But all that stuff comes with a price tag.
This is, I, I agree, this is one thing I could probably support, depending, again, how they, how they plan on executing this stuff in the, in the legal aspect or in the legislative aspect. Um, what does the council think on that?
I wouldn't kick that one out, let's hold it for, because there's quite a few here anyways.
Well, no, just because we get ten, so believe me, we're not gonna.
I put that one in.
Any other, we wanna, anyone against it?
I'm not against it, no.
Okay, so this might be one.
Maybe, maybe.
Okay, so I'll just, maybe.
I had a question.
What?
I said I had a question mark on it, so there's the maybe.
Next one is expand state transportation funding streams for construction and maintenance of municipal and state-owned secondary roads. This is basically current pow, it's referring to Powell bill money. And that current Powell bill and other state funding is not adequate to address transportation needs. Well, I definitely agree with that. Um, because I think Powell give, bill gives us fifty, fifty thousand dollars per year, which barely can pay.
It's a strike road.
Right.
Hey, come on, I got him down.
And then, uh, again, in many cities and towns, major community corridors are not receiving the level of investment needed to keep pace with traffic.
That's true.
It is true, uh, and more investment is needed for these roads if existing residents are, to embrace business.
Taxes increase.
Well, and there again, the money's gotta come from somewhere.
It does.
And are they gonna take it from somewhere else, or are they gonna just increase taxes, or they do have? I'm assuming what you, what you definitely see is that there's a surplus, and they need to figure out what to do with surplus tax dollars instead of giving it back. And there are tax decreases that are going on in the state. So they are working on trying to stay a little, uh, conservative with our income tax at least. I'm not opposed to more funding for Powell bill, I'm not saying that we should be getting three hundred thousand dollars a year, but I think.
I'm not opposed to that one.
I'm not opposed to this one, I don't know, either. This is something that we would want to vote on, to, to, we would spend a vote on this, okay? Increase funds to remediate contamination in local water supplies. Now, local municipal water systems and the, and the rate payers increasingly, increasingly are footing the costs of cleaning up forever chemicals.
Legacy chemicals.
Yeah, um, and as more regulations are set at the state and federal level to limit these chemicals in water supplies, costs will escalate. Cities' primary recourse is try to recoup the cost for utility, or is to recoup the cost from, for utility rate payers, is through the courts. I have a problem with this only because I don't wanna see, well, more funding, I guess, is all right, but I'd rather see, give, strengthen the laws so that the contamination can be, the people who contaminate are the ones who pay, who pay.
I agree.
So I, and I have this issue with a lot of these items, is that, that they're not holding.
Responsible.
Right, they're not holding the, the root cause responsible, they're just throwing money at the problem instead of.
And that's not gonna fix it.
Right.
That will not fix it.
And that's what really bothers me about this, and, you know, I know we don't necessarily have, at this point, a lot of, you know, chemical issues with our water, um, but.
I say no on that one.
I'm, I'm not, I'd say no as well, but I'm looking for, Mary, no.
I'm neutral on that one, but, but I'm not, that's a, that's a snake pit right there. I mean, you could try to get chemicals out of water forever.
Yeah, well, look at these, these brown sites, and, you know, these DEP sites that, you know, oh, we'll throw a whole bunch of money, oh, we can't get it any cleaner after you spend millions? Okay, I guess we have to live with it.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. Expand incentives and funding for local economic development. And it says, funding is simply inadequate in many cities and towns to encourage job growth. I, I don't understand this, to tell you, it says state grants and incentives are also targeted, are often targeted in ways that fail to assist the areas in the greatest needs of job creation.
Let's change the way they're targeted.
And then maintaining or expanding funding for film tax credits.
Wellington.
Major industrial site development, downtown development, and renewable tax energy credits help cities and towns across the state. I think what they're helping are the developers.
Right.
Yeah, they're not really helping.
If your area is attractive to a business owner, they're gonna come there, if you have to incentivize them to come, then, I, I mean, I'm not opposed to, you know, some incentives, but if you have to really incentivize somebody to come, well, then they're only coming for the money, they're not coming because they really wanna be in the community, they're not coming because they really want to support the community, they just want the money. So I would say no to this one.
I say no.
Okay, that was, yep, um, create incentives to encourage the development of diverse housing options.
No.
Oh, 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 you don't want that.
Well, and again, I think.
It doesn't solve the problem.
They don't, the government should be, right, the government should, if there's, if there's a need and there's a developer that wants to do that, then they can, they can do it.
Right, the state is not gonna fix housing affordability.
No.
I don't care how much money they, they are not gonna fix it, they'll make it worse, but they will not fix it.
The only way, and we've talked about this, the only way to do that is through government housing or rent controls and.
And that, you don't want.
And, and that's not, that should be at the federal level at best, if it's gonna happen. Provide resources to rehabilitate or purchase blighted properties.
No.
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 Fine with me.
This is like the state's gonna buy your tissues and tell you where to blow your nose.
Well, there again, it's, it's a matter of rehabilitating blighted, blighted properties should be property owners. And what they should be doing is making laws so that we can enforce.
Yeah, exactly.
Non-light or collection of.
So that it's not so hard for a village to get something that's literally really blighted.
Fixed by the property.
Or, yeah, demolished, or whatever you gotta do to it, yeah, that's just not, that's not for the state to do.
I agree. Create incentives that encourage and adequately fund regionalized water and sewer solutions.
No.
I, it's basically, this is a number of, um, municipal water and sewer systems continually, um, continue to financially struggle with deferred maintenance needs. Well, first of all, then, they should look at others, who's, who's managing that. These challenges come largely due to population and job losses in rural areas leading to an erosion of taxpayer and rate payer basis. And then while legislators and municipal, municipalities have begun to address these issues with the creation of viable utility reserve and the use of ARPA funding, state estimates show needs still exceed expenditures by several billion dollars.
Hey, we don't have several billion dollars, it's just ridiculous.
Yeah.
You got a billions of dollar deficit, and we're gonna put fifty million, what's the point?
Yeah, I, it's.
I'm sorry, I got a little lift up when I read these.
That's like a, a redistribution of.
Wealth?
Yeah, of, of money to, to failing, it.
But it's not gonna fix it, when you say you're several billion dollars behind, there's no point in putting a million dollars toward it, that's just stupid. Well, I say no to that.
No, no, no.
Yeah, but, next one is reduce regulatory conflicts between state agencies that discourage voluntary consolidation, merger, and interconnection of municipal water systems.
Utility systems.
I'm sorry, municipal, and I'm thinking water, because that's our utility system.
Yeah.
And I don't understand all the regulatory conflicts that do exist. Um, but it says municipalities have contractually obtained older, smaller utility systems of other municipalities and private enterprises in order to provide better and more efficient services to residents and business. Older laws and regulations impose penalties on mid-sized and large municipalities due to state agencies requiring them to pay for relocation of utilities when those penalties would have been reduced or eliminated for the smaller entities they purchased from. The state should work to reduce and eliminate these conflicts, which have the effect of discouraging voluntary consolidation, merger, and interconnection. Now, doesn't look to me, like, when I read this, it's like, we want them to change some laws to make it easier for people to, this I can kind of buy into.
Deal with this one, it doesn't address the county, which is where we probably eventually will have a connection, so the.
I'm not here with that one.
Yeah, but this one, I mean, that one I wouldn't throw up over.
Okay, I, how about Janet, it's good, okay, because I was, I was not opposed to that.
Yeah.
Because it didn't involve, it involved maybe changing laws instead of throwing money at it. Oh, this one. Create an orphan road program where the state improves, I don't know if people have read these or not.
They were copy.
Create an orphan road program whereby the state improves those roads to North Carolina Department of Transportation standards before municipalities assume maintenance responsibilities. So basically, what they're saying is, is that for cities, I'm just gonna read the last bullet point here, for cities and towns, that these abandoned roads can serve as a deterrent to voluntary annexation agreements, even as residents seek municipal services, so. No, I should read the first one, so-called orphan roads are typically created when a street in a subdivision is not built to state or municipal standards, and the developer walks away without an agreement for maintenance, they, so we're gonna fix that for you.
You didn't bond the developer, you didn't do your planning and zoning right, and this, on my page, has a big no.
I'm, I'm a no on, I was shocked when I read this.
It's stupid, I mean, literally, how could you propose some, it's like saying, yeah, our municipality didn't enforce the standards, so now state, we'd like you to fix it.
Well, and again, if the developer is developing on private, what they call private property, I don't think the towns.
Are responsible for it.
Well, not only that, but we can't mandate the standards for the roads, so it should be that the state can allow us to mandate the standards for the roads, but they, the law isn't written that way, as, as I understand it, I could be wrong, but it was a big fat no.
Especially having orphan house, you think the state could come in and like fix your house up?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. The next one is provide local revenue options beyond property tax for municipalities. And I'm totally against that.
That's what we need to do, everything, everything they proposed here, with the one about the exception of changing the law, talks about taking more back money, and that's ridiculous, and this giving people more local options, that is a license to steal.
It is, I agree.
That is ridiculous. So I was no on that part.
Right, no. The next item is support technical assistance programs to assist municipalities with securing or maintaining grants or other necessary municipal resources. Now.
Grants on local cases.
The thing, well, and, and maintaining grants, because grant, because the maintenance sometimes can be, but there are already organizations, and Central Pines is one of them, that does this exact thing. So I don't think we need to have the state duplicating.
Don't we use the state, though, for like, haven't we gotten grants for the police department through the state?
Yeah, but those are, those are, that's not, it's not saying, it's saying support technical assistance, they already have that SAM program, which is very cumbersome.
It's really.
So I, I really don't think anything they would put in place would not be easier than probably. than probably going to, going through Central Pines or going through another organization or a grant writer. I mean, what are they gonna do with all the grant writers? They just gonna hire all the grant writers and increase their budgets? I don't know. I, I'm not, I am not in favor of this, only because there are agencies.
Better, or you do it better?
That I think can do it better and can customize it better, but.
That's a no.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Address the needs of changing municipal workforce through state assistance that supports employee retention, including training and recruitment.
That's not a state job.
I, I'm.
I don't get it. I don't, I mean, address the needs of changing municipal workforce through state assistance, okay, tax increase. But changing municipal workforce, they're talking about, are they talking about like municipal employees? Or are they talking about municipal workforce, like, in your municipality, the workforce is changing?
Well, it's not clear. It basically says, well, the first part of this is saying.
Oh, no, it is clear. It says private sector. And that second bullet says private sector.
Well, it also says municipalities across the state are facing staffing issues as current workers age and retire. So I'm assuming that's current municipal workers, but could be wrong. Training and retention resources are limited and competing with wages offered in the private sector can be difficult. Well, we know that just competing with other towns as far as wages is, is difficult. And the use of training and recruitment tools across state and local government boundaries can improve public sector workforce availability.
Well, here's the big problem.
I don't understand why this is.
And it, there's no point. The biggest issue is they can't compete with the private sector. And no amount of training or recruitment is gonna raise the salary to compete with the private sector. I say no.
That's a no by me.
It's no.
Okay, that's fine. I've thought so much as well.
No, no.
This is kind of senseless.
Right.
Look what we're dealing with. I don't work my household budget like that. I don't think the state should run their budget like that. Well, don't make me comment on that next one.
Oh, the next one. Update the annexation petition thresholds to make voluntary annexations, annexations easier to initiate. This is clearly a developer.
Oh.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Clearly a developer.
This has got.
No. No.
No one will say anything.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, just so that people, in case they're not aware, it says, right now, it requires 100% approval, consent from all property owners, a threshold that can be impossible to meet, even if a majority of property owners can benefit by utilizing the property for bene, for business or residential purposes. So lowering the threshold from 100% represents a middle ground.
Middle ground.
That would still reflect.
A little bit 10%.
The will of property owners, but not handicap communities' ability to economically thrive.
That's a bunch of garbage.
It is.
That is flack of garbage.
And, and what kills me is, is that they just put into law.
The downzone.
That you cannot downzone unless you have 100%.
Yep.
So it's totally not.
Totally ridiculous.
Okay, so that's a no. I just wanted to make sure.
It's a no.
Okay.
We used to have voluntary annexation and it was overturned and it's out. And now what they're gonna do is they're gonna bring back involuntary in, annexation. If you happen to be on the lower threshold that doesn't wanna get annexed.
Right.
That is a bunch of junk.
Preserve authority for extraterritorial jurisdiction to ensure that growth is well planned and investments by homeowners and business owners are projected, are protected. So, communities' land-based planning tools, including the ETJ, are vital as infrastructure investments are made that pave the way for economic growth. Protecting homes and businesses from incompatible uses continues to be an important feature of ETJs. As of 2022, at least 14 counties in North Carolina had no zoning restrictions, with several others being only partially zoned. Protecting neighborhoods from incompatible uses ultimately protects the value of residents, homes, and properties. I, I can support this.
That's number one for me.
Right.
Yep.
That's like, probably the only one I completely agree with. I'm telling you.
I don't know.
And then protect the ability of municipal elected officials acting on behalf of local voters to determine election formats, districts, and other election matters currently under their purview. I don't understand what they're trying to get at here.
You know what I wonder? That second bullet point where it says, "In many areas, residents prefer to avoid political polarization when it comes to the practical tasks of municipal government." We run a non-partisan, and I read that and I thought, you mean to tell me that they're gonna try and say we have to have partisan elections for the village council? What boy.
I, I don't underst, I mean, are all, Lisa and I were talking about this. Are all towns in North Carolina non-partisan elections?
I don't know. Yeah, I'd have to look at statute probably.
I think local government, yes. The county, then.
County's not.
It's not.
No, it's not.
Yeah, but I think local.
But this says municipal elected officials. I, I mean, I would support that one. I, I mean, just based on bullet point number two.
Yeah, but now they're saying act on to determine their election formats, so some could be.
Well, but it would give us the ability not to be. I mean, if another town decides to make their local government, I, I can't imagine somebody to do that. Jeez, what a mess.
Why don't we just leave it the way it is?
Well, what bothers me is, I don't think this would be in here unless someone had brought up in some committee or something in the legislature, something, something had to spark this, cuz it's kinda odd.
It is. At the state level, they're doing that.
Something, something. Yeah, but something had to spark that, which makes me think that protecting it the way it is might be a good idea. And that doesn't cost money.
So you're, you're.
I would be okay with that one.
Yeah, I was just confused as to, as to exactly the, why they would bring that up. Okay. We're gonna leave that one in. Yes, okay. So we've got like four that I think are, well, let's go to the, um, the mayday was establish long-term funding streams that adequately.
We have five.
We have five.
That's all I thought I ended up with.
Yeah, I have five.
Well, and five included, number.
Oh, so we wanna go with the established long-term funding, cuz I think you were a little on the fence on that.
Wait a minute, which one?
And the second one.
The second bullet.
The very second one.
Established long-term funding.
On page one.
Oh, yeah.
That was a question. For Warren.
So let's keep with the yes. Go with five, if you include that one.
Okay, so we've got five that we can vote for. Okay.
Five of them.
So we also, what we have to do is we have to appoint a, um, a voting member. So, and the, this has to be voted on like the 16th, which is Friday, I think, is the voting. So what happens is, is that, so once the, once the voting member is acknowledged and approved by the council, we tell the league who that voting member is. They send that person the ballot to vote on.
And that's all you gotta do?
I nominate Mary.
I'll do it. I'll, I won't make, I won't make any comments either. I'll just vote, okay?
I nominate Mary.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary got a vote.
Mary is the legis, is the voting member.
I was gonna nominate Warren, but he's not here.
I'll put the information in and then you'll get.
Okay.
It'll be done by the 16th or the 17th?
I think it's the, it's the 16th, I thought.
The delegate needs to be.
Oh.
Identified.
Identified by the 16th and the vote goes the following. I think the 17th, so.
I thought it was the 17th.
Yeah, I think Friday is the voting.
Okay.
It's the 17th already? You're right.
Well, yeah, it's way up.
Yeah, I'll give the information. Mary's.
Got it.
Okay. Good. All right. Thanks for going through that. Last item on my agenda is Central Pines Regional Council meeting. On the ninth, Lisa and I met with three members of the, um, Central Pines Regional Council. One was from Durham, I believe. No, Apex.
Hey, Mary. Council member from Apex.
Yes, Aberdeen, and the, I guess he's a CEO or, he's not really a CEO, but he was one of the board members of the, of the council. Now, let's start with the money, okay? So it is a regional council that basically serves, and it's numerous counties in this area, with help just administering various things that a lot of small governments can't, can't do as far as resources and dollar amounts. So anyway, basically, this year is for free and it's a basic, it's on the fiscal year, so it ends June 30th. All right, so if we were to have joined, you know, July 1st, our first year would have been free, or this last year would have been free, and that was their decision to get more people involved. Forty-four cents per citizen of your town is the fee. So for us, based on the last census, is $636 would be our annual fee.
Easy day.
Now, this year, until, um, through the end of June, there is no fee. So we don't have to pay anything to join for the next six months.
Are they extending that free year? No, okay, I just wanted to, otherwise I'd say wait.
Fee would start in July?
Yes, the fee would start in July. And they have not, they recently upped their fee to forty-four cents, but previous to that, they had not upped their fee for many years. So it's not like it's a constant, um, thing. I can't believe I don't have their. Resolution.
This is the old China, China day.
It is the old, and the reason why they changed their name to Central Pines is because they moved down into Moore County. They were mostly Chapel Hill, Durham, Raleigh. But what they do is they, they help towns, um, basically. You know what? Let me go with the resolution, cuz it was very clearly, can I be?
Is it, does it say we partner with municipalities in our region? I'm up on our website. You want me to read it?
Um, I've got the.
You got it?
I should have it. If I can find it in my email. Actually, I sent it to everybody right before the meeting. Oh my God, this email still drives me crazy.
Yeah, I don't like it either. Is that one?
Okay. It's their charter. So basically, let me just read this. So they, they serve as a forum for discussion of government problems of mutual interest and concerns. And they develop formalized recommendations concerning specific matters having an area-wide significance, which may include, but are not limited to, the following. They have human resource development and human relations, and things that would be important to us. Water, sanitary, sewer, electrical, power, and other utility services. Regional land use planning. And the big thing, the big thing for me would be, and they also do inter, promote intergovernmental cooperation. So say, say we, we really need someone to help us with planning and zone, or planning inspections, or zoning inspections. And we don't have a zoning inspector. So we, we could talk to them and say, you know, we could really use help here. Well, maybe there's a town near us that's willing to allow us to use their zoning inspector. Very similar to some agreements that we've tried to foster with Pinehurst and some other towns. And it's, it's difficult to do it on our own. But they, they can basically, they also do grant writing or, um, they, they let us, let, let people know about grants and grant writing. And yes, there is a fee, but, you know.
Anybody who writes a grant is gonna take a portion of the fee.
Right, right. And they just, they just, um, secured a grant for Pittsburgh, which is a small community.
Yep, that's a growing, that's a growing community.
Right, right. And they, not only do they help secure the grants or, you know, write the documents to apply for the grants, but also administer the grants too, which is huge. And a lot of times, people shy away from getting these grants because of the administration that's, that's required after the fact. ARP is a perfect example of that. We're still doing reports for that, even though we, we used our money years ago. So I guess the, the point of this is, do we want to participate, um, in this? And it's, I think, I see a big value in this because I see the big value in just the, the sheer aspect of us working with the mayors, you know, and how, how important it is for all of us mayors in Moore County to work together and talk about issues or maybe work off of each other. But I think in the, in the human resources area, they also do wage, wage studies. And they do wage studies for surrounding towns and it's, I think it's, it would be very beneficial. And it would, we only have really two employees that, that would work on administrative issues, other than the council.
I'm gonna backtrack to the grants. So is, do they have a representative that we can sit down with and say, okay, I'm in charge of the park, um, you know, park trails? Are there any grants that are available that we could look at? You know, is there someone that we can sit down with as opposed to trying to come up with the grants?
Yes, yes. They would, they would, yes.
They be familiar?
That's exactly what they do, yes.
Okay, so we would have the opportunity to sit down with them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I think the grant writing procedure that they can do for us would be very beneficial.
Oh, I think so too.
In their role.
Do you need a motion to join?
Yes, yes.
I'll make a motion to join. This, this to me is a laydown.
Yeah. Now, we also have to, um, in that, when you, um, when you sign, when, when we say that yes, we want to become a member of this organization, we need to designate a voting member, a voting delegate, and an alternate.
Vote on what?
Cuz they have, um, basically, what they're going to focus on as a group, they, um, it's kind of like the league in, in a way.
So they have monthly meetings?
Yes, there can be monthly meetings. You can, you can go to the meetings. They're virtual as well, so.
I'd make a motion to Janet for that. She'll get all those, she'll remove money, she'll get parks money.
Yeah, but I can get that without being the, uh.
Well, we, we don't have to have a delegate, but we do have to have a voting member.
Oh, we do, okay.
I mean, I could be a voting member. I mean, we wouldn't be voting on anything that the council hasn't already agreed on. So it's basically a representative.
I'm not trying to stick it on you, but you know what? Foxfire is a little bit of an outlier when it comes to community stuff. I mean, trust me, when I go to the commissioners' meetings, you can just kinda feel, Foxfire just, we're just different. Frank Quist told me some one day, you guys are just different. I said, well, yeah, we're not gonna get run over. And I think a mayor's level involvement in that organization just gives us, it's a little more, not, not that any of us would not be legitimate, but I just think it's important because there's so much going on that we just really have, don't have a lot of control over. I think if you're willing to do it, you should do it.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Do we wanna, um, I nominate Janice Gregridge to be the voting member.
I'll second her.
All in favor? Aye.
Did you all vote to join or was it just?
We need to make a motion to.
I make a motion to join. Forty-four cents a person times fourteen, forty-four.
You seconded it?
I seconded.
We didn't vote on it, though. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
If we need a backup delegate, I'll do it.
Opposed?
No, nobody's here.
Okay.
So are you going to vote for an alternate then?
Do we want to vote also for an alternate?
Yeah, might, might be a good idea.
Okay, I nominate Mary Gilroy as an alternate. Thank you.
I'll second that also.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Mary.
I think that's a good move.
I do too.
Good move.
Okay.
So when can we start working with them?
As soon as we sign this and get these alternates.
And he asked her.
What? And they have, they've got a board meeting. And they have, they've got a board meeting, because every board, every new member has to be approved by the board, even though they never turn anybody off.
So is there, and that's on the 21st, or it's before our work session? If we decided at the end of June that this isn't working for us, and I'm not saying that's not gonna happen or anything, can we opt out?
60-day notice, you can opt out, yes.
As long as we have that option, but I think it's a great idea. Just the grant, just the grant money alone, if we can get it, if we pay for it.
Many times over.
Yeah, especially, especially with the, again, with like water, storm, stormwater control, even, even our water system where we're thinking about getting an engineer, and they may be able to do a lot of that for us.
So, and like, like I said, one grant, you pay for it.
Okay. Okay, new business, and this, this next item on new business, we are not gonna go into, but I do wanna make sure that everyone's, I think this needs to be in our work session?
Yeah.
Basically, this new law that amend, it's kind of an amendment to 160D, where downzoning, and they expanded the definitions of downzoning, and that you need 100% ratification from the property owners, but it's for any zoning district, it's not just ETJ, it's not just making lot sizes smaller, it's, it's a lot of things, and it's, it's basically, you know, not, not creating non-conforming properties in your zoning, it's almost as if they're saying you cannot make any zoning changes.
That's pretty much where it is.
And there's so much pushback on this law, and there's, they're supposed to take it up again, but it's, it's pretty damaging to towns at this point.
Well, it was slid in, I mean, I mean, it, oh, it just irritated me.
On a, on a, on a North Carolina, on a North Carolina, western North Carolina funding bill.
That is just, I would love to find out who did it.
Well-
That is pathetic.
Yeah. And it was, it was vetoed by, by the governor.
And then, and then-
And then it was pushed through on majority, on a supermajority, so I don't know-
That could make me very happy.
No, I'm not happy, anyway.
We're safe, though, I mean, our zoning stands, and our zoning, our table of authorization, all that, ours, all of our stands.
Right, right. This is work session, and it's probably more how it, how we can deal with this with planning and zoning in the future, so this is moved to a work session. Okay. Any comments or anything about that?
No.
Okay, moving on, we have public comment, so that's items that have been listed on the agenda, is there any public comment from the audience? Going once, nothing, okay, being none, I am motion to close the meeting?
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
And we don't need a motion, but we're gonna take one of these tables, all right?
So we're gonna take one of those-